I'd like to call this Village Board Meeting of May 6th, 2021 to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Marotato.
Yeah.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further, the Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less in all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the May 6th, 2021 Village Board and Committee of the Whole meetings is not practical or prudent in the light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the Village Board participating in the May 6th, 2021 Village Board meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. This was signed by Linda Jackson, Village President of the Village of Glendale Heights, May 6th, 2021. So now we will go on to Pastor Cass. Would you please come up and do an opening prayer for us for in honor of National Day of Prayer?
Thank you, Mayor Jackson. We bow our heads in prayer. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, we pray for our leaders. Guide them by your Spirit. Give them a clear sense of purpose. Bless them with wisdom. Give them strength to stand against pressure and to do the things they need to do. We pray in particular during this terrible pandemic for your provision. Be with all doctors, nurses, and medical care providers who have been under tremendous stress. We thank you for the tireless work of Ameeta Glen Oaks Hospital here in Glendale Heights. Help our community, our country, and the entire world to receive vaccinations and to be protected from this virus. Help all those who have been affected with loss of health, loss of jobs, and income to be able to recover. Lord God, you have blessed us in so many ways. Help us to remember your generosity and constantly to do the things you want us to do. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil. Give us wisdom to know what is wrong. We ask, Lord, that with all the diversity in our community and our nation, we would be united in the things that really matter. Help us to work well not only with those who are friends, but with those with whom we disagree. We ask for racial reconciliation in our nation and for law enforcement officers here and everywhere throughout our country to always act justly and compassionately, no matter who they are working with. Give wisdom and insight to individual officers in the apprehension of anyone to show discretion and good judgment in the use of force and of firearms in particular. We lift up Mayor Linda Jackson and incoming Mayor Chodri Kokar along with President Biden and Governor Pritzker. Give these individuals and others to whom we have entrusted the authority of government, the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in our land. As we look at continued challenges in our own state government, we pray that our governor and legislators would work together and compromise for the good of the state. Do not let our trust in you fail. Lastly, we pray that you would be with the leaders of Glendale Heights and help them to set the right priorities for our community. Help them to know what is right. Give them courage to do what is right and give them strength to continue in what is right. As the leaders of Glendale Heights meet this evening, bless them in the decisions they make through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Cass. Trustee Schmidt, would you like to start us off?
I would, Mayor. Thank you very much. The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many others. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime while working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighes.org or contact Human Resources at 630-979-5357. To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on-street is prohibited during the month of May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on one designated day each week. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Thank you.
That's my cue. I'm going to take over on that one. The village of Glendale Heights is proud to present a new electronic recycling program available for all Glendale Heights residents who have regular waste pickup through Republic Service. On the second regular scheduled collection day of each month, Republic Service will collect electronic recyclables. In order to have an item collected, you will need to contact Republic Services at least 24 hours in advance. Your electronic items should be kept separate from other waste for curbside pickup. For a complete list of acceptable items, please visit www.glandalehighes.org or contact Republic Services at 847-981-0091. On Monday, May 31st, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m., Veterans Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving for our country. Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 will conduct a fallen warrior ceremony, followed by a solemn wreath-laying ceremony. This includes a flag, color guard presentation, rightful salute, and patriotic acknowledgement. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Memorial Day ceremony will have some changes to allow for social distancing, including spacing throughout the park. Face coverings will be required for all attendees. In observance of Memorial Day, village officials will be closed on Monday, May 31st. For more information, please call 630-909-5303.
National Police Week begins this Sunday, May 9th, and runs through Saturday, May 15th. To commemorate this week, the Glendale Heights Police Department will be handing out blue ribbons for residents to put on their vehicles as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty and to show support to law enforcement officers protecting our streets. May 15th is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we hope you'll fly the blue ribbons on that day as we honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their communities. Blue ribbons are available at the police department. For more information, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Get your 2021, 2022 village sticker soon. The new vehicle stickers must be displayed by 12:01 a.m., July 1st, 2021, on the lower right-hand corner of your windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with B-plates are $25. There's an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weight. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a village sticker. For more information regarding village sticker, vehicle stickers, call 630-260-6000. With the spring season right around the corner, the village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit, including works on decks, sheds, patios, reciting of your house, and re-roofing. We would also like to remind you to not pay your contractor until they contact the community development to ensure all work is up to code. If you are not sure your project requires a permit, or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at 630-260-6030. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Trustee Pojak.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights offers a convenient drop-off point in front of the village hall for residents that need to properly dispose of retired flags. Shredding, burning, or throwing the American flag away is disrespectful, not only to the community, but to our veterans and those currently serving in the military. Once the flag disposable dropbox becomes full of flags, will be properly disposed of in a retirement ceremony. If you have any questions about the proper disposal of the American flag or the flag disposable box, please contact myself, Trustee Pojak, at 630-909-5310. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Due to Illinois Department of Public Health regulations and to Restore Illinois Plan, the Mother's Day brunch that's scheduled for Sunday, May the 9th, has been canceled. So for more information on special events and regulations related to the COVID-19 pandemic, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighes.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. We now go on, I believe, Kim Forrest is here from Forrest Mechanical. Kim, could you come up, please? I'm going to read this proclamation since Kim is here. And this is a proclamation celebrating Forrest Mechanical Incorporated celebrating 75 years in business. Whereas Forrest Mechanical Incorporated is a third-generation, full-service mechanical contractor, and whereas the business was started on May 8th, 1946, on Menard Avenue in Chicago, Illinois, as the George Forrest Company, in the mid-1950s, they moved to 2414 West Fullerton Street, Chicago, Illinois, and changed the business name to Forrest Incorporated. Upon the death of George J. Forrest and his wife Marie, sons George F. and William J. Forrest inherited the business and ran it until they dissolved their partnership in 1980. And whereas George F. and Celine Forrest started Forrest Mechanical Incorporated in April of 1981 and built their headquarters in Roselle, Illinois, in 1990, Forrest Mechanical Incorporated moved to their current location at 370 Windy Point Drive in Glendale Heights. George and Celine's daughter, daughter-in-law, Kimberly, and son Gerald Forrest currently run the full-service, women-owned, mechanical contracting business. And whereas Forrest Mechanical Incorporated has a diverse range of commercial, industrial, institutional, government, and municipal clients, and have decades of experience and expertise in all areas of mechanical engineering, contracting, and construction management, including construction and installation of piping, HVAC, commercial refrigeration, and HVAC/our service. And whereas the village of Glendale Heights extends sincere appreciation to Forrest Mechanical for their longstanding presence and contribution to our community, now therefore I, Linda Jackson, President of the Village of Glendale Heights, do hereby congratulate Forrest Mechanical Incorporated on the celebration of the company's 75th anniversary and wish them continued success in the future.
Thank you.
So if you would come up here. I have a proclamation for you. If you want to turn around. Thank you. Thank you for being in the village. We have many more proclamations, so I'm just going to read them off. And if there are no objections, I will sign them. We have a proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. We have a proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. And we have a proclamation to proclaim May 6th, 2021, as National Day of Prayer. We have a proclamation to proclaim May 18th, 2021, as Cross and Guard Appreciation Day. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as National Police Week. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And last but not least, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. So if there are no objections.
Go for it.
I will sign the proclamation.
No objections.
Please.
No objections.
Okay. We do have one more proclamation, though. This is a proclamation in recognition of Sharon Sullivan, District 2 trustee. Whereas on March 8th, 1999, Sharon Fonte Sullivan was appointed by the village president, Benjamin Fajardo, to fill the District 2 trustee position. And whereas on April 3rd, 2001, Sharon Fonte Sullivan was elected by the residents of Glendale Heights as District 2 trustee. Sharon was re-elected District 2 trustee in 2005, 2009, 2013, and 2017. Sharon was appointed as deputy mayor on May 3rd, 2001, and has continued to serve in this role. And whereas the residents of District 2 and the entire community have benefited from her 22 years of dedicated public service on the village board. And whereas during her career, Sharon has served on many committees and commissions, including board liaison to the Founder's Day Committee, Plan Commission, and Golf Course Committees, and chair of the Charity Golf Classic Committee, an event she truly enjoys as she is an avid golfer. Sharon was also a member of the Glendale Heights Junior Women's Club and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Sharon's many contributions to the progress of this village, as well as her warm, caring personality, has earned the respect and affection of village residents and staff. And whereas, together with the village board members, we thank trustee Sullivan for her support as a member of our elected official team, and most of all, her friendship. Now therefore I, Linda Jackson, President of the Village of Glendale Heights, do hereby recognize trustee Sharon Sullivan for her dedication and commitment to the village over the past 22 years, and extend to Sharon, her husband Brian, and their family our best wishes for the future. Now you can cry, Sharon.
Thank you, Linda. Are you guys there? It's been 22 years of service. Is it? Oh, they can't hear me.
Sharon, we have a little something for you also, but Brian has to bring it to you.
I did, Linda. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I just want to say a few things. I just want to say that 24 years, 22 years of service as trustee and deputy mayor. The residents elected me five times, and the trust that everyone has put in me is appreciated, and I thank you. I have absolutely loved this position, and I am very proud of what we have accomplished. The mayor and board have always put the residents first. The friendships that I've made with the village board, executive staff, employees, and all of the residents will stay with me forever. Thank you again for your trust, your respect, and most of all, your friendship. I love you guys. Thank you.
Whoa. Thank you, Sharon.
Mayor, we do have one further presentation tonight. And I believe we're going to queue that up here in just a second. And be running here in a moment.
Okay. Oh, my God.
Whereas the village of Glendale Heights would like to recognize Mayor Linda Jackson for her 30 years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights community. Whereas in 1990, while serving on the Glendale Heights Recreation Commission, Linda Jackson decided to toss her hat in the ring and run for village trustee in District 4. She was quoted as saying that she wanted to see honest and responsible government in Glendale Heights. Whereas on April 3rd, 1991, Linda Jackson was elected as the new trustee for District 4 by the residents of Glendale Heights. She was officially sworn into public office on April 5th, 1991. Whereas in 1995 and 1999, Linda Jackson was re-elected to District 4 trustee. Linda Jackson was also appointed as the deputy mayor in 1999 and served as acting mayor from September of 1999 through September of 2000. Whereas on April 5th, 2001, Linda Jackson was elected by the residents of Glendale Heights as the 13th village president in the history of the village of Glendale Heights. In 2005, Mayor Linda Jackson was re-elected for a second term. And in 2009, she was re-elected for a third term, making her Glendale Heights' longest-serving village president. In 2013, Mayor Linda Jackson was re-elected to a fourth term. And most recently, in 2017, she was re-elected to a fifth term. Whereas during her career, Mayor Linda Jackson has founded and served on numerous village committees and commissions. She has served on the Charity Golf Classic Committee, Historical Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, the Christmas Sharing Committee, Golf Course Committee, Government Agency Partnership, Glendale Heights Character Counts Coalition, Youth Commission, Senior Citizens Advisory Council, Founder's Day Committee, and the Special Events Committee. Whereas Mayor Linda Jackson has been a member of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, Metropolitan Mayors Caucus, the United States Conference of Mayors, the Glendale Heights Junior Women's Club, the Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 Ladies Auxiliary, the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, Neighborhood Watch, Citizens Emergency Response Team, and a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy. Whereas Mayor Linda Jackson has been recognized for her hard work and dedication to the village, receiving the State of Illinois Women of Achievement Award, the State of Illinois VFW Outstanding Patriotism Award, and the DuPage County Historical Society Recognition Award. Whereas Mayor Linda Jackson was instrumental in bringing five Governors' Hometown Awards to Glendale Heights. In 2000, she secured the Award for Christmas Sharing; in 2001, for Safety Town; in 2006, for Veterans Memorial Park; in 2007, for the Annual Family Health and Safety Fair; and most recently, in 2019, for the Center for Senior Citizens Volunteer Initiative Program. Whereas together with the village board of trustees, Mayor Linda Jackson has played an integral role in the development and improvement of numerous public buildings and parks within the village of Glendale Heights over the past 30 years, including the development of the Glendale Lakes Golf Club and Banquet Facility, a new Public Works Facility, the GH2O Aquatic Center with FlowRider Surfing Simulator, and the completely renovated Sports Hub, dedicated a new Millennium Park to former village president Ben Fajardo, Veterans Memorial Park, the Glendale Heights Historic House, the redevelopment of Reskin Park, a state-of-the-art center for senior citizens, the home of Glendale Heights Fest, Oktoberfest, the Show and Shine Car Show, and many other community events, Camera Park. And lastly, Mayor Linda Jackson has been vital in securing an open space lands acquisition and development grant to help fund a new Camera Park for 2021. Whereas Mayor Linda Jackson has always supported local businesses and economic development in Glendale Heights. And over the past few years, she has turned her attention to the development along the North Avenue Corridor to help grow industry within Glendale Heights and diversify the future tax base to ease the tax burden on homeowners. Whereas Mayor Linda Jackson has always kept the health and safety of the Glendale Heights residents as her number-one priority, she encouraged the development of the Glendale Heights Police Department, bringing the police department out of the basement of village hall and pushed for the enclosure of the Armitage Ditch. However, one of her greatest accomplishments is in what didn't get built. Mayor Jackson successfully organized residents, as she stood firmly on behalf of the Glendale Heights community, and successfully stopped the location of a waste transfer station just 2,000 feet away from our western border at Schmal Road and Fullerton Avenue. This transfer station would have had an incredibly negative effect on this community, bringing hundreds of garbage trucks a day down Schmal Road, litter, odors, and rodents. Linda Jackson's passion for the community and tenacity in opposing the proposal in our neighboring town kept her residents safe. And most recently, through 2020 and into 2021, she has led the community through the COVID-19 pandemic, helping 10,000 families find a source for food with monthly food pop-ups, a mobile COVID testing site, and being involved in over 7,700 individuals receiving vaccinations at the sports hub. Whereas Mayor Linda Jackson has always been an advocate for the youth in the Glendale Heights community, believing that in community, believing that investing in our youth today will provide for a better future. Mayor Jackson has always provided various athletics, special events, students in government, mayor for the day, and more to the youth in the Glendale Heights community. Whereas, Mayor Linda Jackson has always been a proud patriot to the United States of America and to the Village of Glendale Heights, standing true to the village motto of "A Proud and Progressive Village for All People." Mayor Jackson, your impact on the Village of Glendale Heights will be felt for generations. Thank you, Mayor Linda Jackson, for your thirty years of dedicated service to the Village of Glendale Heights. Your dedication, hard work, positive attitude, and belief in pushing the community forward is a lasting legacy.
I didn't know that was being put together. Thank you for everybody that worked on it. Just thank you so much.
Just a couple more things, Mayor.
So Mayor, the respect you've shown the police department for thirty years, the love you've shown for the police department, the courage you've had to defend the police department for the last thirty years, has meant a great deal to every chief that's been here, every person who's been here, every officer who's been here, and to the police officers standing here today. So before you leave today, we wanted to give you a final salute, since we can't give you a final walkout. We wanted to give you a final salute for the service that you've given us, I'm going to start crying, for the service you've given us, for the courage you've shown to the police department, and the trust that you've put in us, and for the genuine love and respect you have for the police officers. Officer Guerrero?
He tell, alright. Peace. Again, Mayor Jackson, traditional salute for your service and your commitment to the Village of Glendale Heights, and the love and support you have for our police department. We honor you with this salute. He tell, present, hup.
Just want to say thank you, Mayor, for everything you've done for the police department for your entire thirty years of being here.
I'm so very proud of all of you. Thank you for what you do every day.
Officers, thank you.
Mayor Jackson, on behalf of the village board and the residents of the Village of Glendale Heights, we would like to thank you for everything you've done for us and for always being there. We would like to present you with this small token.
Thank you to all the residents, staff who work so hard, and our residents don't realize how much they do try and provide every service and amenity that we possibly can. To the village board for all the support during the years, and to the residents that elected me time after time, put their faith and trust in me. And I, I knew I should have written something, but I just want to say thank you to all of you. And residents, you're the ones that make this community the greatest place and the best it can be. You're very caring people, and the support you show to your neighbors, the care that you give to the children. And when the pandemic hit, people came out of the woodwork to help one another. And that's what a community is all about. Thank you so much. There is no old business, so we're going to do a slight recess before we do go into new business.
Mayor?
Yes.
Have a public discussion on agenda items and consent agenda.
Oh, did I go too far?
A little bit.
That's okay.
Still do it, we have a little bit of business to take care of.
Okay, we now have public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the board that wishes, in the board, in the audience that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, or there is no committee of the whole either, right, right Mike?
That is correct.
Or any other item, please feel free to step up and give your name and your comment. Seeing as there is no public discussion?
Also, Mayor, we have not received anything through the board documents email as well.
Okay.
And doesn't appear to be anything on Zoom, correct Nicole?
Okay, then we move on. You have the consent agenda before you. Trustee Pojack?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so now we take a short break.
We have to make a motion to take a break?
Recession, motion to recess.
Motion to recess. Motion to recess.
Second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, short recess.
The first new business item is going to be the canvas of votes for the consolidated general election held on April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. For Glendale Heights Village President, Choudhury Ma Koker, four hundred seventy-five votes; Mike Ontiveris, four hundred seventy-three votes; for Village of Glendale Heights Village Clerk, Marie A. Schmidt, one thousand ninety-six votes; Kim Darland, eight hundred five votes; Village of Glendale Heights trustee, District Two, Mohammed Asim Siddiqui, two hundred ten votes; Sufyan Mohammed, one hundred seventy votes; Village of Glendale Heights trustee, District Five, Chester Pojack, one hundred forty-three votes; Village of Glendale Heights trustee, District Six, Mary Schroder, is a write-in, thirty-four votes. It is my honor to introduce Judge Louis Aranda, who will be swearing in the new officials
Good evening. There is no greater honor than to serve your country and serve your community, to bring a difference to the lives of the community members and certainly your neighbors. It is with great appreciation for the outgoing presidency and the celebration of the new president-elect and the trustees that I have the honor and privilege of administering the oath of office. Mr. Koker, please approach the podium. Sir, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Choudhury Ma Koker,
I, Choudhury Ma Koker,
having been elected,
Having been elected,
to the office of the village president,
To the office of village president,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
In the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the county of DuPage,
In the county of DuPage,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of the office of village president,
the duties of the office of village president,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Marie A. Schmidt, if you would please do me the honor of stepping towards the podium. If you could please raise your right hand to be sworn. I, Marie A. Schmidt,
I, Marie A. Schmidt,
having been elected,
having been elected,
to the office of village clerk,
to the office of village clerk,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the county of DuPage,
in the county of DuPage,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of the office of village clerk,
the duties of the office of village clerk,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And Mr. Siddiqui, if you would please approach the podium. And sir, if you would please raise your right hand, repeat after me, please. I, Mohammed Asim Siddiqui,
I, Mohammed Asim Siddiqui,
having been elected,
having been elected,
to the office of village trustee, District Two,
to the office of village trustee, District Two,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the county of DuPage,
in the county of DuPage,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of the office of village trustee, District Two,
the duties of the office of village trustee, District Two,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And Mr. Pojack, please approach the podium. The pleasure's mine. If you would please raise your right hand to be sworn and repeat after me. I, Chester Pojack,
I, Chester Pojack,
having been elected,
having been elected,
to the office of village trustee, District Five,
to the office of the village trustee, District Five,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the county of DuPage,
in the county of DuPage,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of the office of village trustee, District Five,
the duties of the office of village trustee, District Five,
to the best of my abilities,
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you Judge.
And Mary Schroder, if you would please approach the bench. And if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mary Schroder,
I, Mary Schroder,
having been elected,
having been elected,
to the office of village trustee, District Six,
to the office of village trustee, District Six,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the Village of Glendale Heights,
in the county of DuPage,
in the county of DuPage,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of the office of village trustee, District Six,
the duties of the office of village trustee, District Six,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I would like to order a meeting of Glendale Heights in order. And first, I want to say something. First of all, I am thankful to all the voters who voted in my favor and all who voted for other candidates. That shows our democracy is working. And now, I am president of Glendale Heights. Every resident of my community, of my village, will be welcome, and personally, I will take interest in their affairs, in their issues, whatever their challenge have, they have some needs with work and all those things, they will find me very close to those people. And thank you again for electing me and accepting me your president. Now, I would like to extend my appreciation to President, Ms. Linda Jackson, for her great contribution to the community over thirty years. She is truly a legend. I want to thank again personally Ms. Linda Jackson, and I will be in touch with Ms. Linda Jackson, number one. Number two, in case we need any advice, I will seek advice for her. She can come anytime to my office, my doors are open, doors of my office are open, she can see me anytime, if she needs any help, we are here. We are not sending her home. The thing is, this is process, political, legal process, we have to follow that. And thank you, Ms. Linda Jackson, mayor of Glendale Heights. I would also like to say thank you to Ms. Sharon, trustee. She lives in my neighborhood, she's a very nice lady, and she has served this village about twenty-two years, you know, what I believe, you know. So if I'm wrong, one year up, and don't please forgive me for that. And Ms. Sharon, if you are listening, you are my neighbor, you know, good neighbor, whenever you visit, be my guest, you know. Okay, my My remarks will be brief. First of all, for the next four years, our police and firefighters department, the funding will be to the maximum. These people are first responders. I really appreciate their services, their dedication. They put their life for us. And I'm proud of my police department and firefighters. Number two, parks and recreation will be cleaned and safe for the people of this community. Our workforce will be expected to provide the services as indicated in our mission statement. Our contracts with current contractors, with the two great unions which represent our workforce, FME and Emschers, we will honor and we will get all those contract according to their contract. And next, service request will be addressed in a timely and professional manners. If any resident needs services from village, he or she is welcome into my office and anytime, you know, 24/7. I have my phone number. He or she can call me. I will be taking priority to serve them. I am here to serve my community. I know I cannot make everybody happy, but I will make lot of people happy. This is my promise. And again, I look forward to work with you for next four years. And thank you very much, everybody. Next, if some newly elected trustees and village clerk, Ms. Schmidt, anyone should say something, you can say, you know, address, you know.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, meeting back to village clerk, please take roll call.
Roll call.
A roll call.
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
New business. Number three, an ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of Schroder and Schroder Inc. for the 2021 sidewalk removal and replacement program and authorize the execution of a contract by and between Schroder and Schroder Inc. and the village of Glendale Heights, LNI.
It's the first reading.
First reading, Mayor. No action.
No action. First reading. Number, next, number four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement of the Glendale Heights Fast 2021 fireworks display by and between World War II fireworks of LNI LLC and the village of Glendale Heights. First reading. Next, G, public discussion of agenda items.
Doesn't look like anybody, Mayor, wants to speak.
Nobody speaks. Is anybody who wants to speak, say something? No. So next, move on to, yes.
Mayor, there has been nothing on the village's website, getting indication, no one is indicating that they want to comment on Zoom. And also, since there is no committee of the whole, this would also be public discussion on any item that the public would want to discuss.
So move on next, you know, G, public discussion of agenda items. Number one, since there is no committee of the whole, is there anyone in the public that would like to discuss anything with this board? No? Yep, no problem. Yes, okay.
I have a question. Um, please go to the podium. Sorry. You know, you have people that struggle to either move into the community or move out of the community. You guys have, where you want inspections, where people have to pay for inspections. The thing is, is that you have, that inspection literally should be between the bank, the seller, and the buyer. I don't see why Glendale Heights should come into your home and tell you whether or not you have to fix something to sell it or make the buyer fix it to own it. The thing is, is the bank isn't going to let somebody buy something if it's not up to code. And I feel that we shouldn't have to have, I mean, it's one thing to have an inspector come in when you say, I want to redo electrical in your kitchen, or you want to redo, you know, the plumbing in the bathroom, so that it's done right. But to have somebody go through an inspection just because they're moving, or somebody had died, and they have to sell the home, I think that's between a bank, the seller, and the buyer. And I don't see why we have to pay the extra fees, you know, just to sell our home or to, you know, or to buy our home, that Glendale Heights would be in there to say, hey, you know, I want, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that. You know, it's like, it's already been done, you have all your inspections done. It's for you guys to add on that extra cost, I think that it's ridiculous. I mean, because no bank is going to give a buyer, you know, a loan if your electrical isn't up to par, or your roof is, you know, bad. That should be something that should be taken off the table for Glendale Heights. I mean, it's one thing that you guys have people come in to inspect when we are doing the work, but if you're selling the home, that literally should be between the buyer, the seller, and the bank. Thank you.
Hi, Ed Pope. I have a question. Can you clarify how the residents, how do we get on the sidewalk program? Is there something on the website? Or, I mean, how can we contact you if we need, when Schroder and Schroder takes over? Who do we contact about getting on that list?
So, Mr. Pope, if you'd like to give us the address, we can have our public works crew go out and inspect the sidewalk that you're asking about, and we'll see what needs to be done with it structurally, and we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, you have my phone number, Mr. Pope.
Nicole, this is Mohammed Motaja. I'm the Glendale Heights residence for a long time. Some of them, my friend I know, or, 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 some of the people I know, they had a business in the, they wanted to establish this school in the Glendale Heights, but then somehow villagers did not approve, you know, or giving it a hard time, so they had to move out from thus. So as a new, as a new president, you, I hope you can, you can look into it, so all the business when you come in, they want to establish here, you know, so make them easier, rather than making harder, harder way, so they just not run away from the here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Chodri.
Mike, can you translate that, what that conversation was? Because I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get it.
Well, I apologize because I was speaking for just a second and didn't hear the beginning of it, but I understood that to be a request about establishment of businesses.
Trying to be more receptive and welcoming to businesses when they enter Glendale Heights.
Oh, okay. We always do that anyway.
We certainly tried to. I think he was just trying to say that we ought to try to do a better job.
Sure, thank you.
Hello. My name is Cheryl. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of Glendale Heights. Nothing against you, sir, but we just feel that this election was stolen and not legally done right. If you were voted in by the whole village and nobody was removed, we have no problem. We will try to work with you. I have no problem. But again, back to the fact that we don't feel that this was a fair election, and I'm at this time going to see what I can do for recall. Again, nothing against you. I just feel that the voters of Glendale Heights deserve to have their rights out there and the right to say who they chose as the mayor. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Koker. First of all, I want to congratulate you on your win. I actually.
You should identify. Excuse me, can you state your name?
You have to identify your name.
Christopher Epstein.
Thank you.
And Club Drive. I don't know if the last person identified themselves in the record or anything like that, but I just want to congratulate you. You did win a fair and free election. The election results are all spelled out, and voting early is all spelled out within the rules of DuPage County. All votes were counted equally amongst those that were qualified candidates. I actually supported two other candidates other than yourself, but I'm still here to congratulate you on your victory. You did it honestly, fairly, and squarely. So congratulations. I hope to work with you in the future as well.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
Hello, Mohammed Motaja again. Just, I want to say the, also, also the congratulations to the, to the new mayor and the new trustee as well, you know, I know that this is a fair, fairly election happen, and I, and I, these are the, all of the, all of the community, you know, they actually voted, you know, and that's the reason, all of the new president and trustee and also all of the candidates actually win. So I actually, I actually support, I actually support that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say something? Okay, so we will proceed next, you know, each executive sessions. None, there's none tonight. So we will proceed next, you know. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion pass.
All in favor, Mayor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So motion pass, you know. So this meeting is adjourned.